Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November regular board meeting. We have lots and lots of beautiful faces and beautiful people here with us this evening. It's, I'm very excited to see and hear from you and celebrate you. We will call this meeting to order. Let you know that we're missing Mrs. Stacy Anderson and we have Ms. Kelly Boyer on the phone. And we will begin by having a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. All will offer our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3.1, approval of October meeting minutes.
Meg, go ahead.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financials in 4.1. Ms. Davis, this is you, I believe?
These are the regular expenses. There's quite a few this month, but there's nothing out of the ordinary.
Anything, anybody has any questions or worries about?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the financial agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.1, student and staff recognition. This is what we came here for tonight. Let's do it.
Mr. Board President, we have two campuses that are going to recognize students and a staff member, so would like to start off first with Nicholas Homestead. If the principal could come on up, and then she will take over.
Hello. Zaden and Nora.
Nice.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. So I have two students and I have a teacher with me tonight, and so I'm going to sing some praises about you guys that the staff, the teachers have said about you guys and how amazing you are. So I'm going to start with ladies first. I'm going to start with Nora. Nora is a fifth grader. She is in Mrs. Freeman's class. And here's some things that they said about you. Nora is a shining light in our school community. She has shown incredible growth this year, taking on the role in a student council with courage and dedication. She is always the first to help, offer help, to lend a smile, and to make everyone feel seen and valued. Her kindness is genuine and effortless, and she inspires all of us to be better, more compassionate people. Watching her grow, lead, and support others has been nothing short but amazing. Nora reminds us that strength comes in all forms, and that the heart of our school beats brighter because of her. She's an active member of our student council and a dedicated helper in our roar store. She consistently assists staff in distributing items purchased with PBIS points. Even when the roar store gets busy, Nora remains calm, focused, and completes every task with a positive attitude. Her reliability and willingness to help others makes her a great role model. And so those are just a few. I've got a list. So those are a few things that they said about Nora. So nice job, Nora.[613.82][613.82](applause) Kara's second person is Zaden. Zaden is a hard worker, a bright young man, and has a gritty work ethic. He does not take failure well, and he strives to be the best version of himself at all times. He doesn't lose, he learns. He is always thinking about his next move, and he knows that his future is in his hands, and I'm excited to see what he will accomplish in his upcoming years. Zaden is an acquisitive student who has a variety of interests. He is always ready to learn something new and enjoys telling others about what he has learned. In my class, he is eager to hear what other students have to say and participates in class discussions, usually adding some unknown fact or information he has come across. Zaden is full of life and always has a smile on his face. Zaden goes above and beyond to make sure his work is meeting proficiency. He is a great friend to all and always helpful to anyone who needs help. I enjoy his warm greetings when I see him throughout the halls or first thing in the morning. So nice job, Zaden.[691.12][691.12](applause) And then our teacher is Mr. Lowe. And so, he's got quite a little lengthy list, but I'm going to end. So you know Nicholas is a third through fifth grade, so we're kind of punny people over there at Nicholas. And so one of my staff members wrote him a poem, so we'll end with ode to Mr. Lowe. Things that the staff said. He is committed to excellence. He has high expectations for himself and students. He has been an excellent addition to our fifth grade team. He is extremely knowledgeable about curriculum and is student-focused. He is excellent at managing behavior and has creative, positive relationships with his students. He's a great leader to the team by serving on the guiding coalition. He works hard, is positive, and he strives to make students successful. He is one of those colleagues that consistently goes above and beyond for both students and staff. He is always willing to lend a hand, whether it's helping with fifth grade curriculum requirements, offering support for science fair, or stepping in to assist with leadership and guiding coalition responsibilities. His knowledge, reliability, and positive attitude make him an incredible team player who helps keep things running smoothly and ensure students to get the best experience possible. So he's got quite a lengthy list, but what I really want to read you is the poem. "Who is Trace Lowe?" Written by a team member. How low can you go? The man always walks around with a smile. He is not scared of the extra mile. He's been a teacher since the dawn of time. In a previous life, he probably had forensic crime. Holding children to standards so high, former pupils of his sore in the sky. Discipline, rigor, and all the buzzwords. Teaching students every year by the herds. Forming the most unruly of them to fall in line and be like him. Starch slacks and nice button downs. First here, last to leave these hallowed grounds. The epitome of life, lifelong learning. Fedora wearing to keep from burning. Vigilant like a hawk out on duty, still married. His wife thinks he's a cutie. So grateful to work alongside him. Fighting the good fight, upstream we do swim. The ballad of Trace Lowe. So.[827.12][827.12](applause)
Do we have someone assigned for pictures?
We do.
Nice.
Ms. Cosgrove has a good thank you.
Come on up here and take a picture with us.
Let's all come up here. And moms and dads, if you guys want to get closer, you're welcome to get closer.
Are Noras and Zaden's mom and dad here? We realize that their success is directly tied to you, and we love you and appreciate you for all you do. Thanks, guys.
Mrs. Roach and WMI, if you guys could come up?
All that hair, I'm so jealous.
I didn't even realize it. I think the hair.
Do you guys ever get a haircut?
Never.
Just, I'll get some double-sided tape. We'll put it on and, yeah.
All right. Let me get this set up. Sorry. Okay. All right. Well, good evening. I'm excited to recognize our student of the month, so bear with me. I'm excited to recognize Bill as a student who truly exemplifies the qualities we all strive for in our school community. He has been selected a student of the month not only for his academic achievements, but for his positive attitude that he brings to school every day. He's always willing to help others, whether it's offering assistance in class or lending a hand to a friend in need. His ability to communicate clearly and respectfully makes him a role model in every situation. What truly sets him apart is his kindness. He's a friend to everyone, making sure that no one feels left out. His positivity is contagious, and he lifts the spirits of those around him. He shows us all that being a great friend and helping others is just as important as doing well in school. He is an incredible example to all of us. Thank you, Bill.[1000.12][1000.12](applause) We call him different names. I call him William, and then everybody calls him Bill, and then I try to correct it, and I can't because it's William, so whatever. Right? Bill, William, whatever. All right. I am grateful to have the privilege of recognizing a truly remarkable young man, one who is the embodiment of kindness, dedication, and a servant's heart. And the fact that we share the same name doesn't hurt either. Oh, and dance moves. We're really good. Yes. Mm-hmm. There's probably video, I'm sure. Reagan consistently goes above and beyond, not seeking recognition, but simply doing what is right. He never has a bad word to say about anybody, and he always approaches others with compassion and respect. What truly sets him apart is his incredible work ethic. Whether it's in class, on a project, or in helping others, he gives 110% every single time. His dedication is unmatched, and it's clear that he is driven not just by a desire for success, but by a desire to serve and uplift those around him. He teaches us all the value of hard work, humility, and being kind to others in every circumstance. On Monday, we completed our street cleanup service project. He not only eagerly took on the task, but before long, he was separated from the group, mostly because he was cleaning some other area that wasn't ours to clean. But he cleaned it. It was interesting because my husband happened to be driving by, and he said that he saw Miss Hart and some kids, and he was like, "Ooh, I think that's the school." He goes, "And then about two miles down the road, I saw this other guy, but I thought he was like following you." And so I was going to stop, and I said, "Well, he had a vest on." He's like, "Right, that's why I didn't stop." So I was like, "Oh, that's just Reagan. He was cleaning the baseball fields or somewhere else," and he got all the trash cleaned up. Thank you for being a shining example of what it means to be a true servant leader. So thank you, Reagan.[1128.15][1128.15](applause) All right. And last, it's my honor to recognize Sarah as our counselor at WMI.
My mom.
Yes, your mom.
She's the best.
Yeah. Do you want to do the speech? Okay. No, no, we won't. As our counselor at WMI, whose passion and dedication truly set her apart. From the moment that she joined our team, Sarah has gone above and beyond to make every student feel seen, heard, and valued. Her compassion isn't just something she talks about, it's something she lives every single day. Sarah has an incredible ability to connect with students who often feel disconnected from school or community. She meets them where they are, builds trust, and helps them to see the potential within themselves. Her energy, empathy, and unwavering commitment have had a lasting impact, not only on our students, but on all of us who have the privilege of working alongside her. Sarah, your passion exceeds any I've witnessed in this work. Thank you for being a constant source of strength, understanding, and hope for our students and our entire school community, even CJ. So.[1196.71][1196.71](applause) Let's take a picture.
Can I come up?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys so much.[1256.58][1256.58](applause) Is that it for 5.1?
That is it for 5.1.
Thank you, guys.
It's always fun. Love that part.
Okay, 5.2, junior high cross-country recognition. Mr. Hoffmeyer, I haven't seen him.
Mr. Hoffmeyer's in Phoenix at the AIA meeting, and he's spending the night for the playoff football game for tomorrow, so if the junior high cross-country team could Feel free to stand in front of the board. We're going to recognize all, there's more of you, but I know we'll recognize the four of you. They received a second place across the entire White Mountain League.
Wow.
And is Colby here?
She's sick.
She's sick. Well, Colby, she was first place overall, so just want to recognize these fine young athletes and appreciate who they are and what they've done. So thank you.
Will you guys shout your name out real quick?
Mia.
Alan.
Emily.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, so much.[1337.21][1337.21](applause) Okay, shake your hands. Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Way to go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Way to go, guys. All right, 5.3, junior high softball. Man, they are representing tonight, aren't they?
Three rows. That's awesome.
Is this all of you, or is it?
I think we're missing one.
We're missing one. Bummer.
Mackel.
Okay.
So two.
Two? Okay.
And if the coaches want to say a few words, we'd appreciate the coaches saying a few words.
Hi, my name is Danny McNeil, the eighth-grade coach, and then this is Corinne Collins, and then Vanessa Kinney. And I wanted to recognize Ari Rivera as well. She's a sophomore, but dedicated pretty much all season out there to helping us coach and get these girls up, and I think that her and some of the other high school young ladies really helped with these girls' mental toughness, which I think that in the beginning of the year, they struggled with a little bit. They needed confidence. They had all the talent in the world, I think, but the confidence kind of got in the way. And so we ended up eight, one and one. The team we lost to and the team we tied, we ended up playing in the White Mountain League championship, and we beat them both pretty easy. So it was a good example of what they can do when they play with some confidence. And so I just like to have you ladies try to remember, as you move forward in life and in other sports, whatever you do, do it with confidence. Look good, feel good, right? Play good. So they're a great group of kids. They really wanted that White Mountain League championship, and they went and got it. So we're proud of them.
Yeah.
First place in the White Mountain League.[1460.01][1460.01](applause)
Let's get a picture. We can get a picture with you.
Some of you may have to get in front of the other ones, so the smaller ones get in front. Thank you, Corinne, for corralling the girls. And stay still because parents want to get photos, so all the parents need to get their Anyone else? We got one in the back. You want to come closer? Well done.
All right. Shake your hands. Start right here and just go around this bed. All right. We'll sit over here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Sorry. Congratulations.
Good job. You guys are awesome.
Good going.
Nice job. Good job. Nice job, guys. You're awesome. Well done. How many of you? Yes. Good for you guys.
Not always, but three of the last four years for sure.
That's pretty close.
Good job, Coach.
So I have to say something really quickly. I'm looking at one of the girls who I know I held when she was a baby, and then I'm looking at her mom, who I know I held when she was a baby.[1561.42][1561.42](laughter) And that equates to me being really old.[1565.51][1565.51](laughter) But I love the fact that we get to see these multi-generational kids, moms, dads. I just love that. So, and you got another one that's going to be coming, or two, or, holy cow. All right. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome. Proud of you.[1585.30][1585.30](applause) Okay, 5.4, Ms. Whipple. Always love this.
Ms. Whipple, make sure you brag about the recent competition before you talk about Feast of Carols.
Becky, come on. Get in your sections. Okay. While they get organized, so we'll just announce a few things that have been happening with the choir program at Sholo High School. So they've been really busy, and we've had some great festivals and things happen already this year. And a couple of weeks ago, this group behind me participated in the Arizona Choral Educators State adjudicated festival and walked away with the highest rating of Superior with Distinction. So what that means is they can sing and they can read music. So we are super proud of them. In fact, the sight-reading judge, once they finished their music reading, he just looked at them and he goes, "I don't even know what to say." Like, great job. So we are super proud of them and their musicianship skills and for bringing home what we consider in the music world kind of a state title for doing that well and having that Superior with Distinction rating. These kids have worked really hard for that. So we are super excited and proud of them and the work that they're doing in representing our school district around the state through music. But we are here tonight to also do a presentation for the 41st annual Feast of Carols that is going to be taking place December 4th through 6th at Whipple Ranch Elementary School. And tickets go on sale next week to the community, starting on Tuesday, the 18th. And we would like to invite everybody to come and join us, get those tickets, and come be a part of this amazing tradition that is continuing through our community and is unique to Sholo High School. I don't know of any other schools that have had something running this long and is as successful as we are with this program. So we are excited for these kids to be able to perform again this year and to start the Christmas season here in the city of Sholo and just bring in that yuletide. So again, those dates are December 4th through 6th, and the shows are at 7:00 PM. Tickets go on sale the 18th through the 21st and the 24th and 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and those tickets will be sold at the Sholo High School auditorium. And if you cannot make it to the auditorium to get those tickets, then go ahead and call the high school and ask them to transfer you to my extension, and we'll make sure to get you connected with those tickets. But we're super excited for that. And also, just as a plug for the spring, these kids also just finished auditions this past week, most of them, for our upcoming musical, which will be Prince of Egypt. So we're going to put a plug in for that as well. We're excited to just keep music alive here in the mountains. And they're going to sing for you tonight, one of our pieces from the Feast of Carols. So enjoy.[1774.71][1774.71](music)
(music) Angels we have heard on high sweetly singing o'er the plains.
Oh, my gosh. You guys are the angels. You guys are incredible. Ms. Whipple, tell me how many kids we have involved in our district in the entire music and arts?
Oh, goodness. I mean, we have all of our kids K through fifth grade that take music every week for a couple of times. And then sixth grade through eighth grade, we have band, orchestra, choir. And then the high school, we've got choir, orchestra, and band as well, and technical theater and music classes. There's just so much. I mean, to put a number on it, I don't even know how many kids there actually are enrolled in all of those classes and that are taking so many courses. But it's a very rich tradition and we are very proud of it here at Sholo Schools. I think it's one of our shining programs that we have.
Absolutely. It's incredible. You being fruits of the 41 years, somewhere in there, you were a part of all that.
Yep. This is my 23rd year as a part of Feast of Carols, either as a student or the director, so.
Holy cow. And you're only 24.
Nice try.
You guys are awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for letting us be here. We'll see you guys at Feast of Carols.
Break a leg, knock it out of the park.
To rehearsal. Let's go.
You guys are awesome. Well done.
Thank you.
I heard your voice the most.
What a treat.
Good job.
Ah, you guys are awesome. Give me chills.
I know. It brought tears to my eyes. That was so cool.
This is the best time of the year. I love this time of year. Can we just quit now?
I think we should. I mean, Mr. Weber doesn't want to follow that and neither would I. That was fantastic.
Really, really good.
It was. Rachel, good to see you. So great.
And every performance is just phenomenal.
I just want to quit now. But we'll push forward. 5.5. Navit, CTE presentation, Mr. Weber, and Dr. Farnsworth.
Alrighty. Dr. Farnsworth, board members, appreciate this opportunity to be here this evening. And I assure you, you do not want to hear me sing. I am a very weak tenor. I follow pretty people. If I had David Tenney here, I'd probably sing with him because he can carry a note.
Nah, he can do alright.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Like I said, they're a hard act to follow. This is my fourth year presenting right after them. But I love coming and it gets you in the Christmas spirit to listen to them and appreciate their hard work. In fact, a good chunk of those are in Navit programs too, of the youth that are singing tonight. Just real quick, we want to thank Calvin McNeil. He represents Sholo Schools on our governing board. And Jerry Butler is the CTE director. Elizabeth Lee is the career tech. And always appreciate working with Dr. Joe and Ben at the high school. And so grateful to everyone who makes this work. Just a quick review. We service 14 districts. Excuse me. We are one of 14 CTEs, but we service 11 school districts. Sholo was part of the original five. And so we were the first rural, we were second in the state, only to Evit in the valley. And so just as a reminder, we want all students, when they go through a CTE program, a career and technical education program, we want them to be able to get gainful employment right out of high school. And they can do that with the certifications they earn. And so that's our number one goal. We want to bring, obviously, a funding stream. We'll talk about that shortly, where you stand there. And then for those that it works, we have the three-hour blocks at the college. And we do have Sholo High School students involved there in some of our Navit Central programs in both here in White Mountain Campus in Sholo and Silver Creek Campus in Snowflake. So just as a review, we do pay the $12,000 towards the career technician salary every year. And just know that the money that you see coming into your district, that's being generated by your students in your local CTE programs. And so, real quick here, let's take a look at the more recent numbers there. So, starting there, if you look FY '22, starting back up into the 300s there. And we've $412,000, $419,000 last year. And this may go up or down a little bit depending upon your attendance of your students and how your enrollment goes in spring. You're just under the $400,000 mark. So since Sholo Schools joined Navit, we've been able to generate $9.3 million that have come into Sholo Schools. So that approximately $400,000, where does that go? That goes into your programs right here. So this shows two, four, six, eight, 10 teachers, and you're offering, you know, looks like 12 programs there. That's amazing for a 3A school. That's something to be proud of. I just want to tip my hat to your teachers, to Jerry Butler, CTE director. There's a lot that goes into teaching CTE programs, particularly nowadays, because we're constantly trying to defend this money coming in. The Auditor General's always saying, "Okay, you paid $400,000 to Sholo Schools. What can they show for it?" We show copies of certifications. That is where the Auditor General and the legislature feel like you can prove quality the best. And it's how many can actually earn certifications that are meaningful in the workplace. And so, like I say, I tip my hat to these men and women who work so diligently. They're preparing for monitoring this spring. And equally important, they're preparing for Arizona Department of Education coming on-site in September for an onsite visit. They only do that every five years. And so it'll be a more in-depth monitoring. And so once again, they're going to be looking at nine indicators and there's at least three or four sub-indicators. So you're talking around 35 to 40 things that they're being judged on, to teach every teacher. And so, once again, it's not a piece of cake. You don't just roll out the equipment. There's a lot that goes into that. They have to document where they're teaching all the program standards. And they do an amazing job. Exciting. Exciting to be a part of this and to see that money being generated by your teachers and students right here in Sholo Schools. And so, once again, we appreciate this partnership. And for those students that it works, for we have Central Programs. And I'll talk about those in just a second. Just a quick reminder, our major focus has been, number one, helping your teachers prepare for the monitoring, both by us and by the state next year. And we've also, remember, we spend 301 funding on your teachers to go to any type of CTE training that helps them certify their students. We pay for everything for them to go to the summer conference in July. That's the major conference for current tech ed by program, by CTE program. And so that, it's $750 just for the registration. That's not including, you know, all that. We're happy to pay that because, once again, that's where they get the training they need and background from ADE officials to let them know what they need to be doing in their program. So we appreciate those who participate. We pay $1,000 a year for your district, for your teachers, to have access to the Arizona CTE Curriculum Consortium. It's just a treasure trove of CTE lesson plans, including PowerPoints, activities, and they can modify it to fit their needs. And so we pay $1,000 for your district to be able to access those. It's amazing what's in there. And once again, our focus is on industry-recognized credentials. So real quick, just a quick snapshot of the programs that we offer through Northland Pioneer College. You know, some of the newer ones, Behavioral Health, Industrial Technology Trades, we've got some of your students in that program. That's one of the most exciting programs, still one of the best-kept secrets. They get HVAC certification, they get Alternative Energy Certification, and a little bit of E&amp;I. Because that used to be totally mechanical maintenance and funneling them into the power plants. But with their changing and with changing landscape with those plants, that's why they've modified that program for industrial technology trades. So we're excited to offer those programs. But once again, always remember, 95% of what goes on with current tech ed is at Sholo High School. That's where the rubber meets the road. We appreciate offering these, but this is a three-hour block every day and not all students have that kind of time in their schedules. And we're grateful for what you offer and for what they can capture in an hour there. So that is very much a reader's digest version of what's going on. But once again, more than anything, we're just excited to have our partnership, offer the programs we do. It's fun to come on your campus. I was here two weeks ago in several of the classrooms and there's a lot of great things going on. Dedicated teachers and it's just fun to see the students at work. Really is. I'll entertain any questions.
Not really a question, but just would like to say thank you for the many years that we've been associated with the programs and the people that you turn out. I know a lot of them. And I appreciate, you know, the ability to get into career and good-paying careers.
Absolutely.
Would not probably, well, not probably, but would not be possible without your help. And so I appreciate that and I appreciate what you do for our students.
Now, I appreciate that. Like I say, we love your students. And just a reminder too, we had young Mr. Roten take fourth in Nationals, Sholo High School student. And just amazing. He did a presentation to our board this summer, showed us what he was able to put together. And he broke an all-time record. We had a fifth in Nationals back in 2003. And so, and I apologize, I can't think of his first name off the top of my head, but I call him Mr. Roten. But once again, Sholo High School student, that's the caliber of students we have coming into our programs. We're grateful for your students.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you offer for us.
I just also want to thank Superintendent Weber for, you know, being a good partner. I know Mr. Marchant, if you remember, Board, he came up with revised graduation expectations where they now need to be two years in a CTE program. And that's the reason. It's going to directly translate over time into more industry-based certifications, hopefully more funding. And so there's the method behind the madness. I want to thank the principal for putting that plan together. Because we did have a lot of kids bouncing between programs, which is good, but we need them to be a completer in a program. And those are different conversations that we are having. And so I just want to thank Superintendent Weber, who's a great partner, and the principal for putting together a great plan to up the expectation of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Do you guys keep any sort of an idea, number-wise, of how many of these kids decide to go into a degree in higher education with some of this CTE knowledge that they gain?
You know, as far as placement goes, it's kind of all rolled into one, whether like if they're in the Army, if they're on a mission, if they're in a job. Those are all kind of molded together. And so, for the most part, obviously, it varies by program. But as a general rule, we're finding right in the neighborhood of between 50 and 60% that are out there actually working in the trade. And some of those, you know, they'll change a little bit here and there. You know, you get one snapshot here, you know, and then they'll go to a different job and then they'll come back to where they were trained. So a lot of the stats out there may sound lower than normal, but it's because just at that one point in time, they may have taken another job. My, I've got a daughter in Cosmo and she just went back into Cosmo, but she was selling dresses. At that snapshot point, she didn't count as quote-unquote "working in the field." She was trained in cosmetology. So we have to keep that into account. So there's a lot of running parts here with that. And so, once again, I think for the most part, those numbers are understated. And I keep telling the students, even if they don't choose to do this for the rest of their lives, it is the stepping stone to where they go next.
Absolutely.
So it's just amazing.
I would imagine many of them move on to, you know, this sparks interest in other things or increase interest in that. So, super program, thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
We appreciate our partnership with you.
Thank you so much. I'll let you get to your agenda.
Thank you.
Be grateful I did not sing.
Yes.
Thanks so much. I'll turn this. Was there someone else that needed to do?
We have a couple more.
Okay, so I'll leave it on. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, 5.6, WMI School Improvement Plan slash Letter Grade. Mrs. Rhodes.
The slides are up?
They're up there.
They're here. Okay. So just a quick update on our grants that we have received through the Arizona Department of Education. Over the last two years, we have received a little over $200,000 in order to help improve our graduation rate as well as to move our school to, well, now an A school. But, so you can see on the graph, there's one beyond that. I believe it's 16%. So that's when I came in, we started at a 16%. We go up 89, 88, 76. So we are currently no longer eligible to receive grant money because we're no longer having that need of getting kids to graduation. So it's been a positive impact on what we're doing at WMI. The next one, next slide. Oh, I can do this, huh? Sorry. So some of the stuff that we did with the funding is that we have stepped up on our academics as far as we have subject that we use for our platform. But we've also partnered with community businesses to give them internships and real-life experience in order to be employable in the future. We have implemented programs. We have a print shop. So some of the businesses in town will order shirts from the kids, they'll design them, they will print them, they will deliver them. We're in the process of learning embroidery, like just some skills. And so it's kind of student-driven. It's based on whatever they decide that they want to learn. We had one who, she's a barista, so she has a little coffee station and that's what she does. We have others that are using the 3D printers and designing automobile parts. And it's insane, all of the things that they can do. The commitment has been, it's kind of all-encompassing because the kids had to be committed. We had to find a way to make them buy into what we wanted them to do. So we've gotten them, we do our cleanup events, our kids volunteer over 600 hours a year to different activities within the community. We have our street cleanups. But we also have, it's just three staff members. So those three staff members are vital to the success of any of it. We currently are at about 40 students in the WMI program and we also oversee about 130 doing credit recovery or independent studies through the other campus. Future, my goal is to be the best school in the country. So that's where we're headed. Period. Future implications. Questions?
You were on improvement status and now you're not.
We are not. No, but we aren't the best yet, but we're going to be. We're going to be there.
I agree. It sure sounds like it.
And I will say, having the commitment and the partnership with Arizona Department of Education, with Ken, has been amazing. In my experience within education, having the Department of Education come in hasn't always been always been like excited and everybody's on board, but he has been amazing at helping us to just kind of figure out where we're headed and what we need to do to get there and then call me on it when we're not headed that direction. So it's been amazing to work with the Arizona Department of Education.
Glad to hear that.
It's amazing. We've come that far, you know, since we first started to a, to a quality program and it gets better every year.
Oh, it's going to be the best.
Here it is.
Graduation rates are going up. That matters.
Appreciate you so much. Will you have a graduation in December?
Not, we only do one in May.
Okay.
Everybody graduates in May.
Okay. We'll look forward to that.
If, if I could just add context, you know, Ms. Roach is over the alternative campus and these are students that have struggled in the traditional setting. So they, they're behind on credits, they're, they, they struggle to be in a sit and get environment. And through her leadership and with the help of Arizona Department of Education, they've been able to take all those potential barriers and they still have barriers and challenges, but she's an A rated campus for an alternative school. That's not an easy accomplishment.
Not at all.
That's, yeah. And going back to that, it's interesting because when I talk to community members, when I say like, we have homeless students, like we have homeless students, period. We have kids that have suffered traumas that most of us probably wouldn't survive through. And we're decreasing that. Like they know, I'll drive wherever they're at and go pick them up and bring them to school. You're not going to ditch out on me. But, but again, even in a community as tight knit as Sholo is, we still have kids that have great needs. And especially at this time of the year, it becomes one of those things where it's like, man, I mean, I had a graduate who, he lived in the forest and now he's working in the oil fields in Texas. So we got to change what's going on and we got, they're going to live here. They're going to take care of us. I'm going to make sure they do a good job. Okay.
It's not an understatement to say we're saving lives.
You're giving them hope.
Thank you.
In the future. So thank you for being there for them.
Appreciate you. 5.7 Nicholas School Improvement Plan Letter Grade. Ms. Jones.
Again, so for Nicholas Homestead. Do I get to, oh, you get to, I get to move it. So we have officially exited targeted school improvement. And so we have been in improvement since before Chris Jones moved to Mountain. So it's been a long, I've been here eight years. So it's been a long time coming. 2017 is when we were identified. And so back to Ken, like ADE, I will tell you, Ken, he spent probably, probably close to 20 hours with me June before I ever took the position. I sat on Zoom in Ohio at my mom's house and he knows us. And so I have a lot of respect and a lot of admiration for Ken. He really has stepped in. He has kind of guided. He actually made the phone call to me and said, hey, I'm going to be the first to tell you. And I thought it was really sweet because he then said, I know who the first person you would have called, which would have been my mom.
Sure.
And so he's like, and I'm sorry. And so for me, it was just, it's been huge. So our cut point was 22 and we came in at 25.89. So.
That is great.
So if you look at our subgroup, our subgroup is our, our students with disabilities. Those are our kids that are on IEPs. And so those are our kids that we just weren't showing the growth. If you look at the subgroup in 2022, we were at an 11.91. And then we went 19, 20. The cut, cut point, like I said, was 22 and we are at 25.89. So we are, we're solid. And then having this and then coming back to moving to an A rated school. So Nicholas is about to bust at this point. We are excited. We know we've got a lot of work to do. Some of the great things we've seen is our attendance rate is going up. I absolutely love Officer Matkin. She and I come together, we bring our families in and we, what can we do? Like, and when Reagan talks about those kids, we have those kids and we have those kids all the way down to Heather's school. They are kindergartners and aren't coming to school with socks. Like we have some really hard, hard kids that have seen some really yucky things in life. And so I'm excited how hard our kids are working. I'm excited to see how hard our, our kids have worked, our parents, our teachers. If you look at our successes for Nicholas, it's really that improved climate and culture. It's fun to be there. We, we open the doors and I think that's probably been the biggest feedback from parents is thank you for just letting us back in. Hard conversations. We, we, we talk about data a lot and what is driving our kids and what's driving our teaching. And we've really focused on that this last year. We're continuing on with that. For us, the biggest is that solution focused versus complaint focused. If you come to me and you gripe, great, I've listened to it. Now give me something we can do to fix it. So it isn't going to be just give it to me, bleh, and then, okay, now give me an idea what can we do? And so having that open door and having conversations, being data vulnerable, it really is sitting down with everybody and not thinking you stink if you look at your scores and they're not where you would want them to be, but looking at it and saying, what do I need to adjust my teaching practice to move our kids? And that's where teams are coming together and there's some of our teams, there's a little bit of competitiveness over who, who beats out who. And the kids have realized with IXL, there's a little bit of a fight between classrooms and they're watching and you'll see kids, we saw it at our district PLC. We went for fifth grade a couple of weeks ago and we logged on and we were just talking about it and you heard teachers go, oh, huh, huh, someone's on. And it was like 4:45, somebody was on because their class was number two and they were pushing to get to number one. So it's, it's been really fun to watch. And then for our plan, so we were really lucky. We do still have that money. One more year where the same thing is WMI, this will be our last year of having, having that grant money. We were able to bring back Jason from West Ed, which has been huge. We had a high turnover at Nicholas and so last year, there's been a lot of changes and sometimes change is really good. And so we saved one last visit for her to start and do our kickoff this year. She came back, kicked off and now she's coming back in. She's been meeting with Sharla and I, and really she doesn't, isn't coming in with a program. She's really saying, okay, what do you need? And for us, I want them to figure out the most bang for their buck for their data. Like what really is that driving data? What can we do? Work, work hard, but work smart is what we're really, we're really working on. In fact, Jason will be here next Friday. It was neat to see my teachers be really excited that she was coming back. They've built a relationship with her. And so, and one of the conversations was our PLC is every Friday at 10 o'clock. I was in a meeting, I will say Dr. Farnsworth came in, sat down with him and was like, it sounded great. Like they were doing the things even though I wasn't in the room. And so that says a lot about where our staff is now. The question for Jason for next week was, is are we still going to do our PLC time at 10 o'clock? And so we built that into her schedule. So our normal is going to be our normal. And then if you look at our collaboration, we just, it's really strengthening our PLCs. I want to make sure that as we roll out this year and we've spent this money, that we are using it with integrity and we're using it to make sure that we are ready to roll for next year because we won't have that financial support. I feel like I've got a pretty strong group of teachers so that if there is a little bit of a turnover, those strong teachers are going to be able then to help guide our, our new ones. And so really, when you look at the collaboration, the biggest for me is that intentional, is really making sure that what we're doing is what we need to do for our kids and what's best for our kids. Our kids are what are guiding us at Nicholas. Like for me, that's the biggest thing. And I will tell you, without Whipple Ranch, Whipple's doing great things. And I've sang the praise from one, I am grateful for Mrs. Douglas. We work really close together. We are friends, but we really work close together because they cross that deuce and we want to make sure that it's a smooth transition from the two to the three. And they're working hard so that our kids are ready to move on to that next, next section as well. Okay, do you have any questions?
No, it's just very commendable. Thank you for all your hard work and the staff who works under you and everyone with collaboration can only bring great things. So, you know, putting the kids first and really being there for them.
I'm excited. Really, at the end of the day, it is our kids, all kids can learn. And that really, that's, that's our focus is it, it's all kids.
Yes.
You know, I would just like to make a comment. We've come a long ways in a year and a half because we have a team, we have a team leader and a lot of the people that our leaders are sitting here today, Mr. Marchant, Beth, everyone. It does my heart good to see that we've come such a ways in such a short time because of the people that we have. That's, that's commendable. That means they're going the extra mile. They're doing the extra things. They're concerned about their students. They're concerned about where they're going and they want to see them accomplish things, which has not always been a thing that we've been able to carry through with. We have a great team.
Relationships are key.
I, I agree.
That's the biggest thing is building a relationship. I think I, for myself as a principal, I'm really lucky. My entire school are my kinder babies. And so I know the families. I know where our kids are. I know where our kids were. And so that, that helps me a little bit when I go into classrooms and I see some of the things I do, I'm like, mm. So it's, it, but it's exciting to watch. It's exciting to watch. And at the end of the day, I'm excited to see it, our kids go off to the junior high and see them do the great things because the junior high is just rocking it right now as well.
It's exciting to sit here and hear that. Come a long ways. Thank you. Thank all of you.
In my head, I'm just thinking that these good things that are happening is because we've got the right people in the right places, doing the right things. And I'm really grateful for that because it wasn't but just a short time ago that we had the wrong people in the wrong places, doing the wrong things. And so when we put good people where they belong and they start doing good things, this is what happens.
It's exciting.
And I won't.
Exciting for Sholo.
Yeah. I'm not going to say any names because I'll leave somebody out that I don't want to leave out. And so it's just good people, super great people in the right places, doing great things. Thank you. Congratulations. A lot of hard work, Reagan. It's a lot of hard work. I mean, you have just killed it. All of you have just, I mean, each one of you sitting out, I mean, we basically just have admin and staff here. I mean, you guys are just killing it. All doing your individual responsibilities and making us so much better. So grateful for all of you. Okay, 5.8 Monthly Finance Report. Ms. Davis.
Seeing see in front of you on the screen, the monthly financials, the MNO budget balance as of October 31st. We've spent about 3% more from last month, which is about $764,000. And then the capital budget, we've spent, the last month, I showed that there was no change. And then this month, there's been, we've spent 5% more, which was about $614,000, which is good. We're trying to stay kind of lean with our capital budget, which we'll talk about at the work session coming up next, this next week. We have some big plans for this money. So we're excited about that coming up.
Will we be excited?
What's that?
Will we be excited?
I hope so.
Good, good.
I know Dr. Farnsworth is happy.
If he's happy, we're happy.
Yes. And so this month I've added a couple of slides. So quarterly, I will be bringing to you the food service financials. We are super excited. This is the first time in a very long time that the food service is in the black. It's not a lot, but we're getting there. So for the first quarter of this fiscal year, we are $8,900 in the black. It's a start.
Yeah, absolutely. It starts somewhere.
Yeah, we are super excited about that. You can tell the difference. Last year, this time we were $36,000 in the hole. So that is a tremendous jump.
Well, that's, what is that? Forty, $44,000 swing, right?
Yep.
That's huge.
We're just, yeah, 45, $45,000 difference.
That's called flipping the field.
Yes, it is.
Good for you.
We're very excited about that. And I met with Stephanie today and she said that this week they had their first $1,000, not $1,000, sorry, $1,000, oh my goodness, I just can't talk, thousand count, thousand student count in lunches this week.
Oh, really?
It's just one time, but it's a start. It's, we finally broke the thousand and we're excited about that. We have à la carte at the high school for the students, which makes it easy for some of those kids that are on the go and they don't have time to hit the cafeteria so they can grab a quick lunch in the, is it out in the foyer area or is it outside? Okay, yeah. And she's looking to add to that. So we're super excited about that. And then the last slide I show is, she just has a lot of exciting things that she's doing in the cafeteria. She, for Halloween, she did a breakfast, special breakfast parfait, called it candy corn, but it's, it had fruit in it, looked like a special Halloween breakfast thing. And then a dessert at lunchtime. And then at Math and Science Night at Linden, she had a special thing for that. And then we do a breakfast for lunch at the elementary schools every quarter, just to promote breakfast and get the kids a little more excited to come and have breakfast. So she does that quarterly and then she'll be having Thanksgiving lunch on the 17th and night through the 19th. So she's always thinking of creative ideas to help promote breakfast and lunch at the schools to get more kids to come and have lunch. So I really love what she does. The high schools, she does great things. They have, there's, she's bringing in, I can't ever say that word, but the special tacos that everybody loves.
I want to know when that happens.
Yeah. So that'll be coming soon. But we just love what Stephanie's done with our new, with our lunch. I, we get no complaints and Dr. Farnsworth.
Well, her name's Stephanie Joyner. She deserves all the credit in the world because.
The right person in the right place.
We got the right person on the bus, doing the right thing and we had to make a switch and she's doing amazing work. The food's better, the, the complaints have almost been eliminated about the, the quality of the food because it was really bad when we got here and she has turned it around and she deserves all the credit.
Perfect.
She's catering.
Have her come and see us sometime. We'd like to tell her thank you.
Will do.
Yeah. And she's catering almost all trainings.
She's going to cater our work session next week.
And the trust training.
And the trust training. So.
Perfect.
So any questions? That's all I have for you this month.
Thank you. 5.9 First Reader District Parent Handbook. Dr. Farnsworth?
So in my conversations with our admin team, that it was elevated like, well, we don't have a district parent handbook and we didn't. And so again, there's no action on this. This is just for you to look at it and then we'll bring it back next month. But I looked at some other districts. I looked at the Mesa Unified School District. I looked at Queen Creek. I looked at some other ones to see what their parent handbook looked like. And I tried to emulate what their handbook looks like with, with what ours looks like. And of course, making sure it aligns with our board policy. And so I want to thank Jamie Ramsey for putting her eagle eyes on it and helping edit and change the things that, that I made mistakes on and she did a fantastic job. But yeah, I just want to bring this to the board as, you know, an information at right now. And if you have questions, feel free to call or email me and we can look at it. And so there you go.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or anything? This is no action, so.
As I went through it, I really appreciated the extra, I mean, detailed information. It's just so great. But especially emphasizing under the health section, I mean, there's a how to, you know, so parents, as they go through this, it is a fundamental resource that they can look at. There are links provided, there are resources listed. And so it's just all around, put together, really great. So thank you for all your hard work.
Glad to do it.
Yeah, I thought it was really great in terms of, I was thinking of how well this helps us become part of the community. And, and is really a resource that they can use and draw upon for, I mean, there's a lot in there.
Yeah.
And so I thought you did a great job.
Absolutely.
Are you going to bring up some of the finer points that are meeting Tuesday discussion, maybe something that stood out that we are going to be able to correct some situations with?
I can, yeah.
You know, not a big deal, just a small.
Yeah.
Again, in that point I'm making about the health section, it really shows how we put our kids first. I mean, every section in here does that. Because it's so involved, because it's so detailed. It just shows that extra care put into the detailed information. And again, a fantastic resource.
Well, I copied a lot from other school districts who had it, so.
That's okay. Don't need to reinvent the wheel, right?
I can't take the credit. I just looked at what they put and I go, that sounds really good. What is our policy?
So special, thank you to Jamie Ramsey. Thank.
Yes, Jamie, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Super, thank you. Item 5.10 Recent Grant Approvals. Dr. Farnsworth?
Speaking of Ms. Ramsey, she's been very hard at work writing grants. And so if you have really detailed questions, I'm going to punt those to Jamie. But she did successfully write two grants. One was for $50,000. It was, it's called the Direct Student Services Grant. And that helps pay for tutoring out at WMI, if I'm correct. It also helps us pay subscriptions to Khan Academy to go to third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade and seventh. Thank you. And because Khan Academy has some fantastic resources through the curriculum and keep dropping Kelly Boyer here. Kelly, I'm sorry. And so those are great resources. And then also she applied for the AED, the Automated External Defibrillators. So she was awarded a $5,000 grant, so we were able to purchase extra AEDs. Because there's a new law coming in place this summer. Of course, the state didn't fund it.
Right.
But they expect us to have AEDs for every coach, every practice and.
I've never done that before.
And so we're in the process of making sure we have AEDs. And, and that's no small undertaking of, of what they're asking us to do and giving us $0 for. So thank you to Jamie.
How many does that buy? I was going to say, I was.
Not cheap, yeah.
Two or three, right? I mean, we're grateful for what we, for, for what we get, but yeah, that, that doesn't go a long way with those.
So well done, Jamie, for squeezing every nickel and dime out from the state.
You're wonderful. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
5.11 Principal Reports. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything on principal reports? I hope you don't hold it against us that we ask for these, but they're so great. We love them.
I do look forward to them and I especially appreciate the invitation because at the end of every one, there's an invitation for board members to visit and I plan to take you guys up on that very soon. Look forward to it.
You know, we've been well fed tonight with the things we've already discussed that are going on in our school district. And I appreciate that. I did not get a chance to read those reports, but I'm going to read them tonight. Unless we're here till 10 o'clock.
We won't be.
Hope not.
Thank you. 5.12 Superintendent Report.
Just a few highlights. I think the largest one is that the Sholo School District is an A-rated district. That's, that could not have been possible without our teachers. I want to make sure our teachers get, get all the credit, our ad.
Anybody know if that, if we've ever done that before? Or is this the first time? District, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
How, how long have they been rating us? It hadn't been that long, has it? Is? Is this our first?
About eight years.
Is this our first A-rating district-wide? Way to go.
Good changes.
Great job.
Yes.
So really, really appreciate our staff. And I'm, I'm kind of partial to administration because princ, you can have good principles and you can have bad principles. And I've seen bad principles and you can't be an A or B rated school with, with a bad principle. So super proud.
You're at the other end.
Yeah.
With certain people.
Yeah, so super proud of our administrators. And I think Chris Jones hit the nail on the head in terms of our data conversations. Our data conversations are super more laser focused and strategic. It's, it's no longer personal. Like, I think you're doing a bad job. It's not, it's like, we got 50% of the kids not hitting this target. What are we going to do? That's a different conversation. And I'm super proud of, of our teachers and administrators having those data conversations because I think it's really going to change. And we still have lots of work to do. Problem, I promise you, we still have lots of things to get better at. But we're in a, we're, we're starting to realize, hey, we can do this. And, and it's part of our job as professionals. Super thankful for, for Charlotte. She's having these, these monthly PLCs with grade levels, which I think are helping. They're like mini PD sessions and best practices, which I think are critical. I'm meeting with all the directors to look at their quarterly budgets to making sure, are we appropriately budgeting for things that we may need and forecasting into the future? And I'm pleased with what they're doing. Again, our data conversations and trying to make sure we're getting better at how we track data, use data, have conversations with data. One of the last things I want to share with you, I didn't get to put it in my report, but we have the annual community FAST that's approaching. And you've seen the banners. This is a really, really good, a, a community opportunity. It starts next week. And it says, fast a lunch or any meal, donate the cost of one or two meals during this week. And all the money goes back to the, the families. You can donate at the Sholo City Hall, the National Bank of Arizona, Chase Bank, Arizona Central Credit Union, or online at www.sholocommunityfast.org. So this is a great community event and I just would invite everyone to participate if they can.
Thank you for bringing that up. You know, we talked about some of these kids that are homeless and don't have enough food. The amount of children and families in this district that have been blessed by that particular group of, of faith leaders in our community that got together and put that together has been phenomenal. And I just encourage everyone to, you know, I'm just going to pass up a $10 Big Mac. I can't believe a Big Mac's $10 now, but that's, those are the things we're doing to, to pass that on to some folks who can really use it and, and bless their lives in, in ways that they're in dire need of. So thank you for bringing that up. Moving on to 6.1 Classified Personnel Employment. Dr. Farnsworth?
So as you can see, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. I do want to point out that we had a bus driver trainee hired and ready to go and then their life circumstances changed. And so then they ended up resigning. That's why you, you see that person kind of struck out, but we just want you to be aware that they were hired and had every intent, but then things changed. And so there you go.
I'll make a motion. We approve all the classified personnel employees as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. 6.2 Classified Personnel Transfers, Resignations, Terminations. Dr. Farnsworth?
So we are doing a few transfers in conjunction with our special ed director. We feel like there's a need to increase some hours to meet the needs of some of our students who are receiving special services. So I feel that's, that's appropriate. And then you can also see some of our resignations. I know it's been a topic with the board about the turnover. And boy, we're, we're sure trying to, to hire right the first time. But there's just a lot of different circumstances out there, which, which continually is a, is a turnover, which we don't like to see. But we're working on it.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the certified personnel employment as presented.
I'm sorry, Ms. Board Member. It's classified.
It's classified, 6.2.
Sorry.
Oh, my mistake. A motion to go with the classified as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Just real quick before, I don't know if you folks noticed that Brenda Merrill's retiring and has been a rock for a lot of years. No disrespect to anybody else that we're losing or retiring or anything like that, but I do feel like she at least needs a big thank you. I hope she's being sent off with lots of love. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, 6.3 Certified Personnel Employment. Dr. Farnsworth, please.
So at the junior high, we've, we've had a mid-year resignation that I believe we already approved. We had a counselor leave for, for personal reasons. And so Becky Clark is doing some internal movements and filling those vacancies. And so we just recommend that you would approve this recommendation on her behalf.
I'll make a motion to approve all certified personnel employment actions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.4 Certified Transfers, Resignations, Terminations. Dr. Farnsworth?
Again, unfortunately, we have, you know, Mr. Crawford resigning. Sure, sure appreciate his service to the district. Ms. Garvin at the high school, we feel in talking with the principal and losing different positions that we can increase this interventionist because there is a need there. And we would ask that you would approve these, these transfers and resignations as listed.
I'll make a motion to approve all certified personnel employment actions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. 6.5 Athletics. Dr. Farnsworth?
It's this time of year where we're approving the next seasons of sport coaches. And so we are recommending the board approve those. If you notice, we're also approving football volunteers. This is, this is a, this is an issue that we discovered that we, we did not approve the volunteers initially. And so we're trying to rectify that and make sure that you as the board understand that these individuals did coach for us, that we recommend that they are approved. And that moving forward, we are going to make sure that all of our volunteers on the extracurricular side are approved.
I'll motion to approve the athletics personnel and volunteers as presented.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry.
We did have a few mistakes going forward and we've remedied those situations. And the folks that we're, we're doing right here are the lifeblood of our, our school. I mean, we, we, we love those people. They volunteer their time, well, without pay because they love our kids. And we love them. So having said that, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.6 ASBA By-Law Approval. Dr. Farnsworth?
So I wish Stacy was here to kind of help us with this, but this is the ASBA and you can see in their, their draft with all their revisions, all their edits. They're, they're asking that there's one, instead of improve item by item, they're, from what I understand, they're asking to just, as a board, that you vote and there's a single vote on the full package of the proposed updates. So instead of you critiquing their edits, they're asking the board to approve all of their edits. So we included all their, all their edits and, and different bulletins. If you have any questions, we can research those and do our best to get the answer for you.
Well, having, having you said that, we're going to approve it regardless. So if there's something that stands out, maybe that's something we can go over at our work session also that Stacy would be more.
Okay.
Have to explain to us. With the amount of paperwork that we had in the last couple of days, I didn't get everything, so I apologize. So I'll make a motion to approve the ASBA by law.
I'll hold it for the work session.
Sure?
Yeah.
Is this something we can talk about at the work session or at a work session?
We can add it to a work session. I know we already have three big items for this coming work session that would, are going to be lengthy, but it, if we want to table this, that's, that's fine.
Is there a certain date that we need to approve that by?
I think there is a certain date. I don't have it committed to memory. I'm looking at the pamphlet right now. Because I know there's a December ASBA meeting coming up. Again, we can table it and then I can find that information out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem tableing it.
We can move forward with it. I'm okay.
Pretty sure?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll reinstate my motion.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Just make a note that we'll want to discuss that further, please.
I'll, I'll contact ASBA and ask for what are the major changes and implications and, and get that, get back to you on that.
Item 6.7 Request For Full-Time Dispatch Position. Dr. Farnsworth?
So in working with our Director of Operations, he has been recommending to me, and, and I agree, that we currently have in our structure a, a dispatch person that's also a bus driver. And so when we are lacking a bus driver, they pull the dispatch person to go drive a bus or go, go pick up a bus or go do something. And so they're not really dispatching. And so that's not ideal. And what we're recommending is that we take this current position, which is really two positions, a bus driver and a dispatcher, and we separate them. That we have a full-time driver and then a full-time dispatch. So it would be in fact, creating a new position, a dispatch. And you can see the job description attached because this is new. And I would rec.
We used to have a full-time person, I believe.
No, this.
Oh, did we never?
No, this position was a bus driver position that we've made a dispatcher.
Okay.
So now we want to put the bus driver back on the road and make a dispatcher position.
You know, what are about what, John? I thought we had that before. We didn't have that before, huh?
See, you guys.
I.
We checked with Nikki.
Has anybody been around long enough to remember if we had one?
I thought we had one.
I was, I was almost sure.
We may have.
Back in the day of.
Maybe a long time ago.
I, I believe that we did as well and that is when we hired Mr. Holiday to be a dispatcher, if I remember correctly. And that was probably a couple of years ago.
So we were told different.
So we kind of got away from it then.
Yeah, I was thinking, Kelly, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I was thinking back in the days of, I cannot think of her name. Huh? Yeah, Danette Wagner.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I thought so. Okay. Yeah, it's kind of been.
My concern is if we do this, Dr. Farnsworth, are we going to post this so that anybody could apply for the position?
Yes.
My, my understanding is yes, and I'm getting a direct nod from Frank that we are going to be posting this so anyone can apply for the dispatch position.
Great. I just want to make sure following district protocol with that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Right people in the right place.
I'll move to approve the full-time dispatcher position as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? All in.
It's going to be coming out of MNO.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And, and, and I just want to make sure that that falls in line with where we are vegetarily and that it's, you know, that it's in line with where we need to be.
Just fully responsible, right?
Yes, Kelly.
Looking forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second. Okay, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 6.8 proposed occupational therapy services.
In, in the narrative provided to us by the Director of Special Education, I'll just read a snippet. It says, "Since the reduction, the district has actively advertised and sought to contract with in-person occupational therapy providers to restore full service capacity. Despite repeated recruitment efforts, we've been unable to secure an in-person provider. Hence, this is why we're bringing to the board a quote for a virtual occupational therapy provider," which, which is approved as an approved vendor. Obviously, we would love to have an in-person contractor provide those services, and we're, it's just difficult to provide those special, special services to some of our students, but we still have to provide those services, and so we are recommending that you approve this vendor.
I had a question. Can we no longer purchase those hours for an OT through the Navajo County Consortium?
So, so Kelly, Beth Marsh said that she did contact them, and they were not able to provide an in-person provider for that.
Wow, okay.
Or, or virtual person. And that's our first step. If I, we first go to the county because other schools need the same type of services. So yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll second.
I need a motion first.
Oh, I motion to approve the proposed occupational therapy services. Sorry, I was gonna ask that you scroll.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
Second.
All right.
I have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly. 6.9 high school library book purchases. Dr. Farnsworth.
So the high school has recommended the purchase of some, some books. Ms. Cosgray has worked with them and followed board policy, making sure they have been on display and open to the public for the allotted amount of time, and I communicated with the high school administration to make sure, you know, topics of rape or, or other sexual things are not in these books or excessive profanity, and so we removed a couple more books, and so what we have left is the recommendation of the high school, and it's been on the proper amount of days of display, and I would recommend that you would approve these books for purchase.
You're happy with them?
How many copies of each, just out of curiosity? Just one copy. I notice a lot of them are fantasy and adventure and romance. Makes it kind of fun. How did we-
Now, there's only one Harry Potter, right? Whatever you find after that is, yeah.
How did we come to opt for these in particular?
Our library.
Oh, the recommendations by the high school librarian?
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder if they were requested by the students themselves?
So you whittled it down to what we got?
I would like to thank staff for getting the books, knowing that they're appropriate for the high school, and with that, I'll move to approve them as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 6.10 staff meal purchases.
So there is a bucket of money that is called gifts and donations, and if it's unspecified, we need to come to the school board and ask permission if we can spend it on certain things. And so you will see a letter from the high school from Mr. Marchant and a letter from the district office asking permission from the school board in these undesignated funds for gifts and donations. Can we use these for, for meals for staff, or maybe some small gift cards, or what else am I missing, Shaylee? No gift cards?
Can only be spent for staff meals for certain, like for-
Teacher conference?
So, so like welcome back meetings, having stacks and snacks and refreshments, the Christmas feast for district staff, teacher appreciation week, making sure we can-
End of the year.
End of the year banquets, those types of things, employee celebration, so we can fund those out of, out of those gifts and donations.
So is that account have a list of things that we've okayed for it to be spent on, and we're adding this to that list?
No, these are the things.
So there, so we're, we're now defining in that account, right? Okay.
And it has to be done every year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that-
And if you look at the high school request, this, the high school's requesting a welcome back celebration snacks and refreshments, fall parent-teacher conference, career fair dinner for staff, Thanksgiving feast, which is coming, teacher appreciation week, breakfast and lunches, and event chaperones for various school functions throughout the year. So, and then they spell out, like, it would be $15 per person for breakfast, and then $20 limit for lunch and dinner. So they even spell out, this is the appropriation for those different meals.
It has to be reasonable. I move to approve-
My question is, while I appreciate doing that for, you know, the, the staff at the high school, is this also going to be allocated for the other schools? It seems like we're singling out one school, and I believe those types of funds are supposed to be kind of spread out amongst everyone, not just, you know, a singular group of individuals, and that may have changed since back in the day. So I guess I was wanting clarification on that. I, I just felt like if we do for one, we should do for all.
So these are donations that came in to those schools individually, so if-
So they're not tax credit funds then?
No, no, these are gifts and donation funds.
These are gifts and donations.
Tax credit can't be used for staff at all.
But to your point, Ms. Boyer, the other schools, if they wanted to, if they had monies that are not specified in their gifts and donations, we would also bring a letter to you asking for those different schools to have leeway to spend that money.
Yeah, they could do the same.
Thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
And so principals, if you have those types of monies, give us a letter.
I'll move to approve the staff meals from gifts and donations as presented.
What a wonderful use of that money, and I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.11 approval of sped policy. Dr. Farnsworth.
So as we approved those, those big policies from a month or two ago, I missed this, and so when I called the trust, they said, oh, you need to tell us what option. And so after talking with our Director of Special Education, she is recommending, and I'm recommending, that we use option three for this specific policy, 5-203.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your approval is presented.
I have a motion from Kelly.
I'll second.
Second. Any other conversation on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 6.12 hiring of Power School support and training.
So about a month ago, Mrs. Ramsey went down to Vail and to get a Power School training, which is our information system that we run, all of our student demographics and everything else on it, and she, well, she made a contact with Dan Chambers, who used to work for Power School, but now does his own consulting. Long story short, it's hard to find experts that can help us answer questions, and we're asking the board to approve this contract up to, not to exceed $2,250 specifically so Ms. Ramsey can call Dan and ask questions about attendance and coding, so when we submit our reports to the state, they're, they're not, they're, they're, we work out the errors before and we get the proper funding. Ms. Ramsey, am I forgetting anything? Is that it?
Kelly, you got anything to say?
Paul, Paul's asking Kelly if you have anything to say.
No, no, I think it's great. I'll move to approve as presented.
Perfect.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Before we move on, can I ask Shaylee, out of what budget will this come out of?
It's coming out of the MNO budget, out of the, out of Jamie's bucket.
Portion of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
6.13 paper educational support system.
So we approved this last year, and I just wanted to make sure we approve it every year. This is a company that works with our high school specifically on their four-year tracking of their goals, CTE plans, and making sure there's a plan for after high school. This is a, this is an online system that they recommended. We approved last year. I'm trying to see what-
Has it worked well for you, Ben?
That's what I'd like to know.
Yes, this is major clarity.
Great.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the paper educational support system as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. 6.14 approval of Khan Academy. Dr. Farnsworth.
So we, we approved this last year. Again, we're bringing it back to the board for your approval. We, we now have permission to kind of lower the, the grade level that have access to this. As we stated earlier, Ms. Ramsey was awarded our direct student services grant, which will pay for this, and so now students and teachers in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade will now have access to this online curriculum that will support the, the content that, that we're asking them to teach. It's really focused, if you've ever looked at Khan Academy, on the four core, like math is big, science, English, and social studies.
This is just to assist them in their studies, correct? It isn't the curriculum?
It's a supplement. That is correct. So this is a resource for teachers to, if they wanted to assign a specific lesson to kid, to kids based upon the standard or a skill, they could assign a kid case by case, or they could assign the class a specific lesson, or in some case, and mostly right now, a lot of our teachers are using it as a, almost as a thought partner. Like, they could type in there, I'm looking for lesson plans or activities for how to teach a slope in an algebra class, and so then they would have the resources, videos, different resources that they could use to help them teach that content. So it's kind of almost like a, I think it's a one-stop shop where we can have kids use it, teachers are using it as, as a thought partner, there's an AI chatbot, which really has some cool safeguards on it, which it won't give the kids the answer, because I tried it, and like, hey, give me the answer to how to start a paragraph. Well, I can't help you, but here's some things to think about. And so it's, what I really love about it, it, it's got some really good safeguards in terms of internet safety. So all of those things.
Is this our second year with, with those folks?
It is our second year, yes, sir.
And this is in addition to what we've been doing, or just keeping going with the same?
It's keeping going with the same, but also giving access to third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, which didn't have access last year.
Here to four, it's been eight, eight to 12.
Yes, sir. Here to, last year, it was eighth grade up to 12th grade, because we wanted to see it and test it with the older kids, and-
We're expanding.
Now we're expanding it down.
Kids can have access and-
Starting from the fourth grade up.
Good.
Third, third grade up.
Third, third grade up.
I'll make a motion to approve. You still got something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask one more question. So in the classroom, then, they're using two AI tools, the Beyond Textbooks and the Khan Academy. It's not an AI tool. That's what I thought, okay. Curriculum tool, but they don't go to the computer for that? That isn't the same? Okay. All right. Thank you. You can go ahead with your motion. I'll move to-
Did we need a second?
I'll move to approve the contracted services with Khan Academy as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.15 out-of-state travel. Dr. Farnsworth.
We're asking that the board approve the senior trip to Disneyland and Six Flags at this time.
I move to approve the contracted service, oh, sorry, move to approve the out-of-state travel. No worries. I started depending on you. I move to approve the out-of-state travel as presented.
That's always been pretty successful, hasn't it, Ben? I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.16 PTSO organization approval. Ms. Davis?
So this is the next PTS, PTSO officer listing, Lyndon, that I just need the board to approve.
I'll move to approve the PTSO organization officers as presented.
I'll second that with just nothing but applause to our Lyndon PTSO. They do such a wonderful job in everything they do and present to our Lyndon staff and students, so I thank them.
Thank you.
Second motion if I didn't say that.
You did. I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.17 an authority for approval of concessions fundraisers.
So every year, we have an issue getting the fundraisers, fundraising applications to the board in time for the clubs to help with concessions, and after consulting with Karen Smith, our consultant, she said that we could bring a motion to you to have a delegation, myself, to approve those funds, fundraisers, instead of waiting to bring them to the board, because then it takes so long to have them get those approved. It's based off the fact that concessions is like an entrepreneurial type fundraiser, just kind of like Mr. Crawford's culinary type activities, and so those don't come to the board for approval. So she said, per the USFR, this would be an approved process to actually have you guys delegate me to approve those types of fundraisers instead of bringing those to the board. So we're asking that you approve giving me the authority to sign off on those fundraisers for the concessions.
I agree with the idea. I just wondered how you would divvy the funds or know how much to budget for each.
Well, it's, it's a fundraiser, so they get, they get half.
Oh, I see.
Whatever club helps in the concessions, they get half of those, of the funds, and then the concessions gets the other half.
Delegating that to you, Shaylee, but I was wondering, can you guys still just keep us informed as to what is going on? Because I love seeing the fundraising events and what, what the students are doing. So I would just love to be kept in the loop, but I totally think you're capable of overseeing that.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll still go ahead and bring those to you, just so that you can see who's doing them. Absolutely.
Perfect. I appreciate that, Kelly. I, I felt kind of the same way.
As presented.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.18 student fundraising activities, speaking of.
So to, to Mrs. Boyer's point, I just want to clarify that Shaylee will only be over concessions. All other fundraisers come to the school board for approval.
Thank you.
So, so Ms. Boyer, yeah, this is just for concessions at the high school, in fact, and so then all the other fundraisers. So you see in 6.18, we're asking the board to approve, at the high school, the Powderpuff and Peach Fuzz shirts, the coin drive, the girls' basketball, selling bags of popcorn, the girls' basketball, free throw, jamboree- the girls' basketball free throw jamboree, the cross-country concessions, Nicholas Homestead-Stuco candy cane sales, and Nicholas Homestead-Stuco, the Valentine Day sucker sells. So we're asking that those get all approved.
I'll make a motion to approve this, too.
Kelly motioned.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.19, gifts and donations, Dr. Farnsworth, please.
Again, we live in such a generous community, and I just want to kind of read through these. The Sholo Youth Foundation donated to robotics for $2,808. Sholo Ford has donated to the high school for the staff Thanksgiving feast, $500. Hatch Toyota has donated to the Thanksgiving feast, $750. Highline Vending back to the high school, $759. Shutterfly LLC to the high school for $224. The Sholo Youth Foundation to the Culinary Department, $1,000. The University of Kansas to Sholo Junior High for staff training, $1,100. I don't know how to pronounce that.
Honey you tink?
Honey, honey you tink?
Uh, honey you tink, I don't know.
LLC, Phonics in Action, cross-country, $350. Northern Arizona Community Food Project to the school district for McKenney-Vento students. And if you don't know, McKenney-Vento is our homeless students. For hygiene kits, $1,063. The White Mountain Helping Hands to the Nicholas Homestead Music Program. Soap and for the washing of the trumpets, $91. And the Charlie and Ramona Fuentes to Nicholas Homestead for clothes for our students, $213. So just want to publicly thank our community for constantly supporting the Sholo School District.
Folks around here are real generous. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the gifts and donations as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So much for the generosity of our community and even outside of our community. Thank you so much. Item 6.20, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? Kelly, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to do that here? Can we?
You can always throw them up. Just if you have something, you can inform them and we-
There may be some come out of the district.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I received nothing for call to the public for 7.1. So our next board meeting is going to be December 12. Remember that we have a meeting Tuesday, the 18th.
5:30.
5:30, at the district training room. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. You guys are the best.